Hello, everybody. It is 6:30, and I will be calling the Monday, July 8th, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Tonight's meeting will be held in person, and it'll also be held on Zoom. My name is Ali Awad. I'm the chairperson. I'll be leading the meeting. Public will be welcome to participate when invited throughout the meeting. We'll have a series of public hearings. You can join in person or on Zoom. Additional instructions on how to participate online are at www.burnsville.gov, and it's located in the public meeting calendar on the website. As usual, tonight's meeting is also available for viewing on BCTV and on the city's website. If you're unable to participate this evening and you'd like to submit public testimony, I encourage you to email your comments to city staff or mail your comments to City Hall. The instructions for participating online are available on the website, or you can go to zoom.us/join and type in the meeting ID, which should be posted on your screen. The meeting ID is 844-2370-5562. Once you're logged into the meeting, please use the chat feature to tell the moderator which item you wish to speak to. The first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda from commissioners? Are there any changes to the agenda from city staff? There are no changes to the agenda. I would love to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So what?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. The second item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which was on June 10th. Are there any changes to the minutes from commissioners? Seeing none, are there any changes to the minutes from staff?
No changes.
No changes. I'd love to entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. The third item, this is my own kind of rogue addition to the agenda, but I'd like to just take a moment to welcome our new city staff member, Planning Manager Mike Morosola. So, welcome, Mike. Good to have you onboard.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Happy to be here.
We'll move directly to the public hearings. Our first public hearing. This is an application of Andrew Stallman for a zoning ordinance amendment to the B1 Office Business Zone to delete Health Club from Title 10-20-4, conditional uses, and add it to Title 10-20-2, permitted uses. City Planner Deb Gross will be presenting.
Thank you, Commissioners, and we have many applicants out here this evening as well. This is a zoning ordinance amendment, and the applicant is online this evening, so if you have questions, he is participating online as opposed to directly here at the meeting. The applicant, Mr. Stallman, came into City Hall and wanted to apply for a, basically a massage business with a sauna. And the city's ordinance is not set up to allow those two things, and one is just not defined that way. So he is looking to operate in a B1 Office Business zoning district, and it's an existing building. And in looking at the ordinance, there are a few different ways that we could take a look at it. First of all, we thought of changing or amending the therapeutic massage section of the code to allow for saunas, but because therapeutic massage is very heavily regulated through state statute and licensing, the city attorney suggested that we not go that route. So what we had decided to do then is, in the B1 list of permitted uses, we do have therapeutic massage, and that's why we looked at that first. However, under the conditional uses, there is a Health Club use. And in Health Clubs, that definition is pretty broad. It includes a lot of different things, including massage, including saunas, steam room showers, those types of things. So to kind of facilitate the application, we took a look at the various zoning districts, and from a staff standpoint, our recommendation is to amend the B1 zoning district, basically to, whoops, add the Health Club as a permitted use in that district, and then that will roll as a permitted use to all the other business districts. That's how the Burnsville ordinance is set up. And then we would, in the same section, delete Health Club as a conditional use. So basically, just change it from a conditional use to a permitted use, and then that would be consistent throughout the ordinance. There would be permitted uses in all of our business zoning districts. And with that, I will stand for questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from commissioners? It seems pretty straightforward. Since there are no questions, I'll move directly to the, we'll open the public hearing. It is 6:36. And so if this is something that you'd like to speak to, please, if you're in the audience, you can approach the podium. We ask that you state your name and address. And if there's anybody online, I know the applicant is online. They're welcome to speak, not obligated to speak. The applicant is online if we have questions. That's what I'm being informed. Does anyone have questions for the applicant? No questions for the applicant. And nobody else on Zoom wishing to speak to this matter, so we will close the public hearing at 6:36. And move it back to the commissioners for discussion and/or a motion. I would move to approve.
Seconded.
The motion has been moved and seconded. We'll call a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Did you close the public hearing?
Pardon me?
Did you close the public?
I did close the public hearing, yeah. And we didn't actually read the recommendation, so can, do you mind doing that since?
Yes, I'd like to move that the Planning Commission recommended the city council approval of an ordinance amendment for Health Club uses to be allowed as permitted use in the B1, B2, B3 zoning districts.
Okay, so it's moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
So this motion will be, or this item will be heard at the next city council meeting?
Actually, for, the process has changed a bit, so this item will go to the city council on August 5th.
August 5th, and it'll be, because we approved it unanimously, it'll go on their-
Beyond the city council's consent agenda.
It'll be on their consent agenda. Thank you. We're on to our next public hearing item. This is an application of Burnsville Holdings LLC for a conditional use permit to allow a drive-through coffee shop preliminary and final plat of Rashid Edition at 12901 Aldrich Avenue South. Also presenting, Ms. Gross.
Thank you. The subject site is the former Chinese gourmet restaurant site that has been out at the corner of Burnsville Parkway and Aldrich Avenue for many, many, many years. It has been up for sale, and we have, the applicant would like to open it again as a restaurant, and then also have a small retail tenant as well. So they're looking at two uses. This is in the TOD, Transit Oriented Development Zoning District, and in that district, if you want to have a drive-through, that requires a conditional use permit. So that is really what the application is for. The property has never been platted formally, so the, our, part of the application is preliminary, and then final plat for just the one lot plat, not changing any boundaries or creating or removing any lots. So fairly straightforward. On this slide, to the right is north. That would be Burnsville Parkway. And basically, in the TOD district, the subject site is about 7.6 acres, pretty small, .76 that is, fairly small piece, but it does meet the ordinance requirements for lot size, lot width, and lot area. The building total is a little over 4,000 square feet, and the parking required for the use, because it was a full sit-down restaurant in the past, there is adequate parking that is on-site. They are required to have 38 stalls based on the restaurant use, and there are 43 stalls on-site, so they do exceed the minimums, and those extra stalls, if they were to do the smaller retail use in the tenant's space, which is a little over 1,500 square feet, they would have parking available for that as well. And then there is a transit bus stop that's indicated by the bus. I did that. I know you'd all be excited, but there really is one there, yeah, so there's a transit stop for MBTA. The only real change is really the direction of circulation within the parking area. The, what they are proposing to do, and something that is definitely believed to be benefit from a staff perspective, is that north driveway, changing that from an in and out to just an exit only, which will help with the traffic circulation right there when you're trying to turn onto Aldrich or from Aldrich onto Burnsville Parkway. That existing driveway access is really close to Burnsville Parkway, so it can be kind of a, an interesting thing trying to maneuver in that area. The only thing that they are showing then is they do have the minimum six stacking spaces, which will be on the east side of the site, and they'll be just putting in a window for pickup for the coffee shop. With that, we do have the floor plan, basically straightforward again with the coffee shop. And for the preliminary and final plat, they do meet all the requirements for the subdivision and zoning ordinance, and they are dedicating the drainage and utility easements that are required. Preliminary plat, again, because there really isn't any changes, fairly straightforward. And then the final plat, again, just shows the new lot and block description and the easements as required. With that, the recommendation from staff is we're recommending approval of both the conditional use permit and the plat, subject to five conditions, that they will need to obtain signed permits for any exterior signage. They also, because it's in the TOD district, they are required to provide a bar, or excuse me, a bike parking space, so that will need to be provided and shown on their plan. The north driveway is going to be designated as exit only, so that will run then with the land that that is exit only. Number four, there are engineering review comments that I believe were included within the packet, and those need to be addressed. And there are development fees in the amount of $13,456.05 that would need to be paid prior to us releasing the plat to be recorded. So with that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Gross. This property was not plat, has not been platted. Is that because it was built before the plating was required in the city?
Yes.
And then what is triggering the plat? Is it the-
Anytime there is, if you need a land use approval, so in this case, the conditional use permit, if the property is not platted, then it's platted at that point in time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Timmerman?
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Gross, nice presentation. I have a few questions. The first one related to what Chair Awad was asking. Typically with plating, we see a park dedication fee. Can you talk to me about the, I guess, there not being a park dedication fee with this particular property, and if there's been changes citywide related to that?
Yes, thank you. That's a good question. There is a change, not really a change in the statute, kind of a change in the way that it is looked at. The city has been involved in a legal case with another property owner of a plat and dedication fees. And when you actually look at how the statute is written, we can collect park dedication fees when property is subdivided. So if you're creating an additional lot or additional lots, at that point in time, we are able to collect park dedication. In a case like this where they're not creating an additional lot or splitting it, actually subdividing it, then park dedication would not be taken for that.
Okay, thank you.
We will be having, I apologize, we will be having an ordinance amendment. The attorneys have put together some changes for the subdivision ordinance, for that language, and some additional information that we will be including in our future staff reports and findings of fact, just to make sure that we're following the statute appropriately. So that should be coming to you in the next couple of months.
Okay, great. Thanks for that clarification. I think I'll save any other questions for later. Thank you. Commissioner Anderson?
The amount of parking, does that cover both the vacant space and the coffee shop?
Yes, it should, yes. In the TOD zoning district, there are, when you have transit, there are certain reductions that are allowed and credits that are given. So yes, even with, because the space is relatively small, if they wanted to do something, depending on the use, we calculate parking at the time of the permit would come in, and if they need more parking spaces than what they have, then they would need to come back to Planning Commission for either some type of a variance-type thing, a planned unit development, something of that sort. They do have additional area that they could put some parking. The green space requirements in the TOD zone are very small because it's intended to be an urban district, so.
Commissioner Brannick?
Can someone clarify for me the engineering note that says that the drive aisle for the drive-through and parking may be shared, given the existing condition, and the note that the applicant is making no changes?
Yeah, I think it's just that they can, they don't have to be separated by a median or something, that they can use that same drive aisle, because that's how it is today.
Okay, makes sense.
Any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner Timmerman?
Thank you, Chair. I guess later is now. I'm concerned about the intersection there, especially anybody going westbound on Burnsville Parkway and turning southbound on Aldrich. With the existing traffic, there are very close calls that I've seen. That intersection is not great. What kind of considerations have there been for the additional traffic, especially the quick volume in and out for a coffee shop with that particular intersection? I know we've done traffic studies on TOD as a whole, but this one is particularly concerning.
On this, I don't believe that the engineer required additional traffic study, but they did feel that it did necess, it needed to have at least the one way out. If they were going to be, you know, redeveloping the site, we would look at then moving that access or just have it combined as one access. But you do have, it's, it's a tricky spot because you do have the curve for Aldrich Avenue and also the close proximity to the lights that are on the freeway entrance and the exit ramps right there. So from there, from the engineer's perspective, exit only was a requirement that they wanted to see.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hamilton?
So if I recall, the intersection of Aldrich and Burnsville Parkway, you can only make a right-hand turn. There is no left-hand turn.
That's correct. If you're coming north on Aldrich Avenue, yes, it's just a right-only.
The Chair, may-
Sure, yes.
The concern that I'm sharing is when you are turning south onto Aldrich from Burnsville Parkway, because of the curve in Burnsville Parkway and the speed of traffic that's higher than posted, people turning, going westbound, turning southbound, it is ripe for T-bone accidents.
Are you making that, that, right there, so you're making-
Exactly.
Okay, it's a tight corner, is what you're saying.
It is, and the traffic is kind of coming around a curve here at higher speeds.
Okay.
I've seen quite a few close calls, so, I mean, obviously, it's going to increase traffic to this corner. I think it's a great spot for a coffee shop. I think it's a great spot, you know, transit-oriented district is not intended to have a lot of, you know, drive-throughs. This is a pretty good spot for it. Just worried about the traffic there.
Seeing no further questions, I'm going to move this to the public hearings. Oh, one more question. Commissioner Anderson?
When you look at that island that makes the right-only turn, is there a way to extend it south so that people won't try to turn into the do-not-enter access?
I don't think that, well, I guess I don't know what the ordinance is for moving that entrance, if we can move that as part of this plan, if that'd be completely different.
It would be, I mean, the engineer can review it. We do have the ability because we do actually control both Burnsville Parkway and Aldrich, so at least we're not dealing with the county road and whatnot, but yeah, that would be something they would need to take a look at in terms of what, what options are available there.
Yeah, we can look into that. Now, we are requiring that they put a wrong-way sign so that no one will hopefully come in the exit-only way, so.
Yeah, and we, as, it's, these are existing conditions. They're, you have a use that's taking, you know, that's using the existing conditions, so I don't know that there's a whole lot that we can force the applicant to do in terms of changing a property that they're not otherwise changing, would be my take on that. Commissioner Hamilton?
So would there be signage on that exit from the business that says do not enter? So you don't have-
Yep.
Yes.
Leaving the property, there'll be signs that say exit only, and coming, if you were to try to turn into the exit only, there would be signs that say wrong way or do not enter.
Commissioner Timmerman?
Thank you, Chair Awad. I promise, it's my last comment this time around. And thank you for that clarification, because I was going to ask just that, the recommendation condition number three talks about designated as exit only. I will likely propose that we just clarify that, saying designated with signage or designated and signed as, just so it's very clear that that signage is required.
Is the signage, forgetting the exit signage, but the actual signage for the business, there is a sign there. Can they change that?
The business sign, yes.
So they don't, do they need a permit to change the, what the sign says?
They do, yes, they do need a permit to make any changes, all signed changes, even if you're replacing it, but just updating it, you do need to get a signed permit to do that.
Okay, with that, we're going to move this to the public hearing. It is 6:52. And if there's anybody in the room that would like to speak to this matter, please approach the podium. And there is nobody on Zoom that wants to speak to this matter, and nobody in the room that is moving to the podium. We'll close the public hearing at 6:53. We'll open this up to discussion amongst the commissioners and/or a recommendation. Commissioner Timmerman?
The only discussion that I have, and if there's no other, I'd make a motion, but it would just be to clarify that, item number three, to include signage. All right. I would like to move that the Planning Commission recommended the city council approval of the conditional use to allow a drive-through in the transit-oriented district, and approval of the preliminary and final plat, subject to the following conditions that we've discussed, with number three being amended to read, "The north driveway on the site shall be designated and signed as exit only."
There's a motion. It has been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Again, this is a unanimous recommendation, so that will most likely be on the city council consent agenda.
Yes.
Our next public hearing, this is the application of Unity Catholic High School for a conditional use permit amendment to remove the requirements for future amendments based on school enrollment at 3333 Cliff Road East. Ms. Gross?
Thank you. This application, the site is the property of Mary, mother of the church, so it's a fairly large site, a little over 20 acres. It is owned a single family, and the church has existed there for a number of years. In 2019, Unity came in for a conditional use permit to operate a parochial school at the site. At that point in time, they anticipated that within five years, their enrollment would be approaching 200 students. So what the Planning Commission and council conditions were, they recommended approval to allow the high school, subject to three conditions, and what the applicant is requesting is, the third condition called for them to come back either, once they hit an enrollment figure of 200 students, to come back and amend the conditional use permit, or by July 16th of 2024. Well, that's in a week, so what the applicant has requested, and staff is supportive of, is just removing the date requirement. So at the time, they do have the 200-student enrollment. That's when they would come back in for reevaluation of the conditional use permit. And from a staff perspective, I guess, going back, initially, they had 16 students at the high school, and they anticipated, as I said, 200 by 2024. Their enrollment, their projected enrollment as of now for the next '23, '24, or actually be '24, '25 season, would be 68 students. So they're still well short of that 200 size. The, they don't anticipate, you know, reaching 200 for, for many years, but they are okay with keeping that condition, that when they do, they will come back in for further evaluation. The school hours are different from all the church activities, so they have 538 parking stalls on-site. If, even at a point of 200 students, that would break down to 40 spaces, so there are more than enough parking spaces on the property to accommodate both, and the reason there are is because they occur at different times, and that will continue to be the same case. So the recommendation is to recommend approval of the conditional use permit, basically subject to the same conditions that it was back in 2019, except removing that July 16th, 2024 date.
Thank you, Ms. Gross. I remember this item from when it first came before the Planning Commission, so it seems pretty straightforward. Any questions from commissioners? Is that a yes? Mr. Timmerman?
If you'd allow.
That's what we're here for. Commissioner Timmerman?
One of the reasons back in 2019 that we discussed having them come back was to reconsider the plating, which we had put on hold as a part of the original application. Have you discussed with the applicant plating the property?
Well, we're suggesting keeping it the same. Again, what they had talked about for the last application is when there's some type of addition to the building, doing the plat at that time, so that condition will still remain in effect.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's a big property, so the plat is a, it's a big, it's a big deal.
Yes.
So, and I think we were, I think part of the thinking is, once you get to 200, you're going to have to change the building somehow to accommodate that many students, so I think we're still consistent. Any other questions from commissioners? Seeing none, we'll open up the public hearing at 5, 6:58, 6:58 PM. So if you're in the room and want to speak to this matter, you're welcome to approach the podium. There is nobody on Zoom that is, that is calling in on this matter, and nobody in the room approaching the podium. So with that, we will close the public hearing also at 6:58, and move this back to commissioners for discussion and/or a recommendation. Commissioner Anderson?
I would move that we recommend to the city council the approval of the amendment, removing the July 16, 2024 date.
So there's a motion on the floor, and that's the July 16th, oh, yeah, July 16, 2024 date, yes. Is there a second to the motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Hamilton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Again, this is a unanimous motion.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Gross. So the next item on our agenda is updates. Are there any updates from commissioners? No updates from commissioners. Any updates from, from staff? I think there are.
Quick update. Thanks, Chair and Commissioners.
Thanks, Chair and Commissioners. Good evening. Nothing like the, I just, I just volunteered to do the staff update tonight. So the July 16th is the next regular city council meeting. There will be two development applications on there from your last meeting on June 10th, the preliminary and final plat subdivision for the Roars Project on Burnsville Parkway. And then the other one is this conditional use permit for the open storage lot on Ladybird Lane, if you remember that from June 10th. So both of those items are scheduled for next Tuesday's council meeting, because the meeting last week was canceled for the July 4th holiday. Kind of a planning commission-adjacent item, just to make you aware of, also on the, the next week's council meeting, is the council will be considering an amendment to the land sale policy. We met in the council in a work session, May, I think it was the May work session, we met with the council just to talk about some changes to the land sale policy. It was initially precipitated as part of the conversations with Costco, so Costco is looking at potentially purchasing the former fire station property on 140th Street for, to move the gas station. You may recall their previous development application. As part of that, the first step is for the city to go back and amend our land sale policy, to make sure that we're providing kind of a transparent and open process for all land sales across the community. The council was favorable of the changes we are recommending, so we'll be, that, the actual amendment to the policy will be on the, the next council meeting. Pending that, we'll, we'll likely move forward with a solicitation of offers for that property, the former fire station, to open up to the public for any land sales that may be interested in that, so.
Commissioner Timmerman?
I'm curious, will that be like a sealed bid type of process? What is the new process going to look like?
Yeah, so Chair and Commissioners, we are recommending a three-step process that's followed, and this is really focused on properties for development purposes, so that's the focus of the policy. It will really follow a three-step process. The first step is kind of a due diligence, like a pre-sale due diligence, where we'll do, you know, appraisals, maybe any sort of like title investigation or environmental investigation as needed. And then based on that, staff will kind of prepare a draft solicitation for the council's consideration, which will establish kind of what the, the goals of the sale may be, any sort of like schedule, right, the kind of logistics, it's simple, but a kind of a, a solicitation. Then the council, the first step for the council would be to then to issue that solicitation for the property. It would then be posted publicly, so it's all public, posted at least for a minimum of 30 days, and there'd be kind of a, a date, a deadline date for submissions under that, after which point, we would rank them, right, based on the evaluation criteria that have been adopted by the council as part of the original solicitation, and then we would bring, bring in those rankings back to the council for their consideration, and kind of a selection of a preferred buyer. And then we would enter into like a exclusive rights, like a letter of intent with them, with exclusive rights, where the third phase we would move into is then negotiating a purchase agreement that would come back to the council. And there's some nuances on that. It would go to the council if it's city-owned, it'd go to the EDA if it's owned by the EDA, but then there would be kind of a public notification process as part of that. So yes, it is open and transparent to the public for both the bidding process, the review and ranking would then be reviewed by the council as we'd select the buyer, which would all occur within the public meetings of the council.
Okay. Just as a follow-up, I'm a little curious about that process, because I know that at the state level, when property is sold, it is a sealed bid process. At the county level, it's typically a sealed bid process. After it's gone through the sealed bid process, then over-the-counter sales can occur.
Yes.
So I'm curious, I'm sure Legos looked at this and everything, I'm, I'm just kind of curious a little bit about the nuance there.
Yeah, and we retain the right, of course, in the, the policy, just on the, like, whether the council will review those rankings in closed session. They do have the ability to legally, right, the council can review any sort of offers of property, and to make counteroffers property in closed sessions. So there is an opportunity as part of any of the solicitations, if needed, to close the session, to discuss the, the offers that have been made, to, to address that concern of releasing that information to potentially other buyers and, and impacting negotiations on it. So yes, we still retain the right to do that in closed session with the council, and would use that as necessary to ensure that there's no, we're not putting ourselves in a disadvantage in negotiating terms of a purchase agreement.
Great, thank you. Thanks for the detail.
Is there a process, if you receive no, you put out the bid situation, so to speak, and if no one bids, is there a process after that where you can negotiate with an individual?
Chair and Commissioner, excellent question, yes. Once the original solicitation period has kind of closed, if we don't have any offers, we, under the policy amendments, we would be able to keep it open on a rolling basis and review offers as they're received. Right now, there's like three different options of how we could sell property, based on the property, and we just wanted to make sure it was, as we've been talking about, transparent, public, and consistent across all land sales. And then, couple other quick things. So at your next meeting, we did put down, I think, tentatively, the election of a chair and vice-chair will be on your next meeting agenda, and then there are two tentative development applications at your meeting, an application for a plat in variance on Oakwood Drive for a single-family home, and then a rezoning and a planned unit development for an expansion of North Imports on 140, no, 1705, Highway 13. Lastly, we introduced Mike, so we're excited Mike's here. As you know, the planning manager is a new position into the organization, and I think an important one, so we're excited for Mike Merusala to be here as our planning manager, to lead our planning team, and that's kind of his focus. So, early priorities, we've talked maybe about some of them, like the subdivision code we talked about tonight, is on Mike's kind of early list of priorities and projects, as well as some of the other ordinance. As I know, you've talked about here, the TOD parking requirements within the heart of the city area, the adult-use cannabis regulations, we're starting some work on that with some of the recent guidance that's been issued by the state's Office of Cannabis Management, and of course, the project that you are familiar with, kind of restarting the comprehensive updates of our zoning and subdivision regulations are kind of early project priorities for Mike, as well as just being here as a resource, and he is kind of yours, he is your staff liaison out of the planning commission. So we're excited Mike's here, and I continue to be here as well, and Deb, and Kevin Shea, and Kevin Driscoll, since he will continue to be here in attendance as their projects need, but Mike is kind of the key contact for the planning commission. As I said, I'm excited for Mike to be here.
It's good to have a growing team.
Yes, exactly.
Yes.
Yes. So with that, Chair, I'm sorry to be long-winded, but those are the updates that we have.
Awesome, no, thank you, thank you very much. That's, that's, that's all great. Welcome again, Mike. With that, our last item on the agenda is adjournment. Motion by Commissioner Braddock, and seconded by-
Well, second.
Commissioner Hamilton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.